Hello everyone, welcome to the Eurocoy Central School District Board of Education meeting. The college meeting took order and asked for a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel.
So moved.
Right. All the discussion on paper. Boog. Okay, we're going to move into executive session and we'll return in seven years.
Cross talk.
Very good. All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to those who have come to observe the meeting of the Iroquois Central School Board of Education's meeting. There are two periods of recognition of guests listed on the meeting agenda. The first is for comments regarding agenda items, and the second is for topics not on our agenda. Speakers may offer comments related to school operations and programs, but the board cannot hear personnel complaints against any individual associated with the school system. Please address these concerns to the appropriate administrator. If you wish to be recognized, please fill out the appropriate form and turn it into our district clerk. As per policy 1514, public participation in board meetings and public comments by district residents is limited to 15 minutes total unless the board suspends this limit. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. Additionally, there are no more than three people, I'm sorry, no more than three people may speak on a single topic unless the board also raised this limitation. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in dialogue with the members of the community this evening. District personnel will follow up with me regarding your concerns. Rest assured, we are listening carefully and we take seriously what you have to say. Please demonstrate respect by speaking to the issues, sharing your ideas and opinions, but not engaging in personal attacks. The board appreciates your willingness to share your concerns and your celebrations this evening. Please be advised that this meeting is being livestreamed and reporting is posted on Iroquois website. Thank you. If we could please stand for the pledge from the cab being said by Will Carter, it would be silent. People, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its own ground and in its law with which it has a strong.
Did you want to give a picture? Everybody play.
Absolutely.
Great job.
Next, we invite Maddie Grebel to come up and give us a student report from high school.
Do you want to contribute?
I want to.
You want to contribute to that too?
Oh, God.
Yeah, I got to.
Hi, everyone. My name is Maddie Grebel. I'm a senior this year. I'm involved in three different sports in many different clubs, including SGB.
Sorry to interrupt, but she pulled the mic closer. Another one, okay, sorry.
Great, that's all right. So far, this school year has been great. It was a good transition from summer break as we begin sports, fall activities, including Fall Freshman Day. Some of the upperclassmen involved in different clubs hop on the second day of school to get the freshman adjusted to the changes the high school brings. SGB additionally took the time the week before school to decorate with welcome back posters, class posters, and cheap pride. Something that we as students really are striving for this year is involvement. Because this is our first fall normal year since 2019, we really want to make the most of it. This week, there's a club there during lunch periods. Each club has a table and posters of everything to promote their club. They each then have a sign up sheet and some information containing upcoming meetings and getting in touch via their mind app. Some more ways of pushing involvement is at games. We've roped off a student section for football games and doing everything we can to promote each game and trying to get student support. This is not just for football, but all sports are posting their schedules and trying to get the word out. varsity college will be posting team schedules in the main hallway and on the TV soon. From a student perspective and talking to some of my teachers, many kids are happier, more excited, and more appreciative this school year. We are very excited to be back with the community and be able to participate in old Iroquois traditions, including the pep rally, post-Parcaville bonfire, and senior face painting. I think that the best way we can keep students happy is continuing old traditions that are loved and maybe starting something new that many students agree on and suggest. And with that, we find promotions everything, spreading the word and making sure everyone knows exactly what is to come is key. For Anna SGB, we are planning homecoming. This year, we sent out a form for students to vote on a dance theme, which is going to be Let's Flow Iroquois. This way, students will feel more involved and get to have a say in what we do at the school and what our events are. Thank you for this opportunity to share for the year. Thank you for this opportunity to share the excitement we have for the year as we get started. We appreciate your support for student activities and look forward to what's to come.
Thank you, Maddie. That brings us to news sharing. And the first item in our board discussion, news sharing is ambassadors. Do you have an ambassador report?
Yes, I'm the ambassador for rural primary. And two weeks ago, I went to the kindergarten, the open house, and it's S Thursday. We had the one for four open house session, so it was good. We love parents and felt a lot of the new SRO at rural primary. So it was, and it was very well attended. And everybody seems to be much more relaxed this week. It's definitely more than normal now.
I talked to Kalamazoo primary, just wanted to thank everyone who does our officer. And then September 28th, I'm going there in the morning. So, yeah, it's sad, very George, yes, and I'll follow. I'll be there.
I spoke with Chris today, and this thing is open house. I don't know if you've seen the board meetings, like the open house, but we really have courage. And I go, thanks, gentlemen, for letting us see it. It's basically a swap, it's a pretty job today.
Is that working?
Yeah. I, this is bus ride, why not, eight by one, but one of the drivers understands that they're doing bus rides and chatting a bit before after he was preparing, riding along on the bus and met most of the staff there, so I was enjoying it all, and I had not had a chance to patrol today yet, so I was glad you could have saw me.
I went to the SAB meeting, because I lead VAS from the middle school, and they are talking a lot about their fundraising and bringing back a lot of the.
Sorry, the football team that was walking by the way, you're not.
The middle school MSA is bringing back their in-person events, they're talking about pumpkin lighting. It's maybe not going to be as big as it's been in the past, just as they kind of reintroduced that event. And they've got the fans coming on. I think the original theme was really interesting, now it's a little bit of a new theme. And they also had their connectivity day, which sounds like it was just an absolutely wonderful event for the students. They were able to spend the day reconnecting with their friends and making new friends and really learning what it means to be a community. And that theme of community and community involvement is going to continue through the rest of the school year with different events. So. Good example.
My kids came home from school, so excited. What do they call the combination there?
They call it connectivity, but it's part of the combination.
Yeah, and they were just so excited. Even my husband was excited. So, taking very long with that.
Good, good, that's good to hear. So the next item is an ECASP update, which we have the leadership dinner on October 6th tomorrow, and we'd like one for the district clerk to register us, so if you have to have to come home, please say immediately after the meeting so that she can register us. It is moving live attendant, and it does include, this keynote speaker is gone by April, our former fourth ever colleague, so that we're going to see him, so please come for that. Riff Tim's dinner is on October 13th, and that is a really great program for us to learn about with state budget issued. And then just out today, in the middle, was registered David Little dinner, which is on November 3rd. Again, one of her really great speaker, you should not want to miss. So those are the things that are going on with ECASP. Did anybody go to any meetings that you need to talk about?
I was, I was at that, I had someone meeting, but it was, we were there saying football thing.
A little better, kind of there way.
It was really short and that, I don't know, but I still attend. They want their public company to say that, but, you know, people are eager to get out. So, I don't know. Oh, or next one, or next quarter.
I was there for the budget finance meeting, and it is typical, this is how much money we have, this is how we're using it, kind of conversation, there wasn't any first gen things that we could share, but always informative, so. And then NISBA update. So I got in the mail, this is interesting, it says, Orange and Curious How to Play It's Easy. NISBA would like us to get ready for our convention in Syracuse by taking selfies with the orange and then uploading them to our district's Facebook page with the hashtag NISBA Orange Challenge, and participating boards will be entered into a raffle to win a Syracuse-based basket. So here's our orange, and you're it.
Oh, she said board, can't pass that out.
So, as long as everybody is okay with us posting NISBA events on our district page with that hashtag, we could be entered into a contest when Syracuse is being bashed out. So, which probably needs a basket full of oranges. Any other news reports here? Okay, then on to our super junior report.
Thank you. The first item is responses to last month's public comments. There were no public questions or comments, so I wouldn't respond to anyone. Opening day, the high school student did excellent at talking about it, but multiply that by every building, there really was, and in talking to other super tenants, to be honest with you, coming back to school this year, people really seem to be enjoying it, having a good time, smiles on their faces, excited to come back, and it's been a really positive energy of everything I've seen. Didn't say that as, I don't want to sugarcoat anything, because there are always issues, there's always those pickups coming in. For instance, on the first day, they decided to close down Art Grove Road, and they did one lane for a while, there's backup traffic, and buses were late to work. I was waiting with one student who was at the wrong, got off at the wrong spot, there were some scheduling pickups and things like that, but it really was back to the normal kind of dish on each of the audience as a teacher. See if he's kind, he's had a run over crazy duck, but it really seemed to be a nice change for previous years, a much more positive moving forward. She talked about we having activities for the clubs to re-energize, re-energize the students getting together, and that was really in all the buildings. So that was great for opening day. Through messages, any questions, we'll move on to technical project update. Just received an email just before I came here that the science, so the science rooms are, I'll say 90% done, the whole office is back order on science lab tables, and so I just received a shipping date, I'll actually have over for those, because there's the epoxy on them. So I did pass along to the principals and the department that's related to that information, they are using the rooms because we put on just like a piece of wood out of public, and so they are using the rooms, but we will finish one when that comes in. Then there's other projects going on, I saw finishing, cleared the stuff off the roof today, so the roof is, I'll say 99% done, we have a roof called a punch list to go through up there, the hot water is on two primary buildings, they're still working on the front bathrooms, which is part of the plan, everyone's supposed to be done yet, and the middle school, but they're going along nicely. The one question that everyone keeps coming back to, you know, is the athletic field cluster, why is that going to be wet? And so, just looking at me, laughing, because you didn't want it, the board asking questions just as much as they're else, and I feel bad for the contractors, because everyone's asking that, and I gotta take, they're doing fabulous job between the shipping orders, the legs, the leather, to get it done at all, is miraculous, and it's not done, but in saying that, we're still going to use it this Friday, because once that's done, so there's hyper seating today, there's some spot paper bricks go in, but we just did the sound check this afternoon, all the well people were trained, so this floor is up and running, we're finishing the entranceway, we'll be putting the binder down in front of that either tomorrow birthday or early Friday, so we will be able to use it starting Friday for our sports track, not be mine, we're finding the window, which should be the end of next week to get that done. The reason we're making sure that's there is because I met with the athletic director today, once we got the word, and so Friday, just how it works out with the athletic calendar, is Fridays, September 23rd, will be varsity football kickoff game, so each sport, if you remember, I sent out a message, will have already cutting ceremony for the sport, and then before homecoming, will have one for the regional athletic event going on, where all the community can come down, walk around, look at all the vets, and bring in BMW, you know, the children's different sporting event. So Friday, September 23rd, the varsity football game, the kickoff is at 7:00 p.m., but at 6:30, you're going to be starting at thereabouts, the river cutting ceremony and the senior night celebration. That will be followed by Monday, September 26th, the varsity girls soccer, they're playing the river cutting at 6:55 or thereabouts. Tuesday, September 27th, we'll actually have two, just what recently happened, this field, maybe you can use it multiple times, will be varsity field hockey, the river cutting will be at approximately 4:55, and then the varsity soccer at 6:55. And using that across, and I mean, all the helps of the public and everyone, we just hyper seeded today, what that means is it's all heard. What that means is it's all dirt or it's raining mud. Stay on the pathways, please. You know, stay on the pathways, walk and remember it'll take a little longer. Don't cut across anything. For one thing, you'll be able to leave the mud and later go back there and redo that work. We have to make sure the track stays clean for the striping, so people won't be going out on the track or out on the field. It'll only be the athletic participants. And be careful where you're walking because there are some spots where papers go off and roped off. Don't cross roads. That's why we're there. Stay where you need to be. And also on the athletic field side, that parking lot there is where the pool trucks would be, penny debt party and senior citizens who have trouble with mobility. Everyone else are on the campus side. It would just work out better. There's still some equipment and everything out there for the back and forth. We will have personnel making sure the right people are reporting to the parking lots. I will be sending out that message, so everyone that's not watching tonight will have this message, aren't we? So that is free to share. Are there any questions about the cattle project?
Do you have any sensitive things for on the public level, please, in actual?
It is the weekend before homecoming and I think homecoming is on the 22nd. So it would be 15th, 15th or 16th. But I would get that out, that message out and open up any advertisement just so we knew everything was done. But that will be coming out through the athletic department. Any other questions? The SRO program, just to pick up the app. I think the program is going very well. The SROs are becoming very great very quickly in different buildings. I think we see children going up and down and that continues to grow and expand. We did have one person concerned, they go out on the news and tell people about the program. They did have a concern about how the people knowing it. I understand that you're avoiding us, they just want to know so that people decide to go somewhere else if they want to do anything. The, they've been at the games, so the SROs have been going to the sports games, so they have had the field hockey, football games. So we haven't had the security at those two. They were at the different houses, drop offs, things like that. And so parents are able to meet them, say hi to them, if they're able to meet them. So that's been going very well and now become the fabric of your report. So thank you for that. Any questions on that? Strategic plan. So the strategic plan, that is something that we finished up and I was hoping to get part of it done with communication at the end of last year, I did not. So actually tapping into Mary Jo on the student experience, because she's going to be working with the MTSS and figure that area, the support for the students is one great start to start. Really glad to hear it from the student that's taken, you can also talk about number, that was number one, MTSS is number one there. The third part is about student voice, being out there, advocating what they need. And you can see some of them are taking lean on it without us doing anything. So that'll be, that'll be great. Mary Jo will love working on that one. Monday, I'm going to be with John, we'll be talking about the facilities and the plans for that. I'll start very close when we lay out a monthly plan for what will be accomplished this year, which I'll share with the board. I'll do the same thing with John. And with communications, that's what I'm doing. So the first steps that I'm going to be taking, I've already talked to the principals about, is getting from district office and the principals, the communication that they agree with or at least I sent out. Then they're going to be working with the teachers to see what they sent out already. From there, we can see all the different change, a lot of different variations of what people do to see if it's all within one area or if it's, we're mixing chaos. Once we establish how that's what we're going to do with it, we will be then, certainly that'll happen for a while, then we survey the parents to see how that's working for that, how the communications are going. And on the opening day, I presented a couple of tighter strategic plan to the teachers so they will be aware of it and the timeline, so as they are working this year, the plans, they're developing for the classrooms, any of these areas they could work into it. In fact, I had some students already for one piece, approached a teacher of our club. I had a teacher approach me about another activity for the students. He's here tonight, so thank you for taking that on, Sean, that was great. It'll be catchy for the U of I students, so that's even a station going on there. So that's all great to see, so we will be moving forward with that. So are there any questions in the strategic plan? I'm going to turn the last tool over to Mary Jo, where she's going to talk about the SEL screener and the curriculum updates and what's where our doing.
Hi, everyone. First, before I start speaking about Panorama, I just wanted to just briefly through the MTSS again, so that it helps us understand why we're looking for a screener for SEL. MTSS is, as Doug has said, part of our strategic plans to experience intent number one. And we have been working on this for several years, but we are very, very close to having it as a K-12 support system for our general education students. Previous to MTSS, we had an academic RTI program in which we use AIMS Web and iReady as our diagnostic assessments. These help to identify potential issues for our students so that we can be proactive rather than reactive, so that we can instill some in the most efficient way possible. And we also have a student support team, an SST team, that would look for students, you know, that would, that would help support students who might be having specific social emotional learning issues. What we decided to do is that we, because really on the research says is that not every academic problem or what shows up as an academic problem is purely academic. Sometimes there's something going on in the student's personal life that can help support them. And if we, if we help the student there, it might mitigate the academic problem in most person.
Anxiety is one example. A lot of people experience this, it's hard to come up with.
That's okay. So when we refer to SEL, social emotional learning, we talk about mindset skills and attitudes. And these are the feelings that we have as students and as adults about whether or not we can succeed. So in the business world, they're often referred to as soft skills. So our routine player, you can have a positive attitude, can you make deadlines? These are all examples of SEL, of learning skills. So when we, as we move from the two separate academic and SEL and put them under the MTSS umbrella, multi-tier student, systems of support for our students, what we need to do is mimic what we are doing on the academic side. So we have to use screeners and when necessary, a more diagnostic assessment. So we've spent a few years looking for screeners. And the one that we've decided upon right now is Panorama. And I mentioned this at a previous meeting, but just so we know about what Panorama is, it actually is a survey level assessment. So when we talk about survey level assessments versus diagnostic assessments, a survey level assessment is kind of like a dip in your toe or looking at a 20,000 foot view. It's the initial, it's the initial assessment. And then if we believe that there's additional information that we need, then we might turn to a diagnostic assessment. So if we're looking at the academic side, AIMS Web is the survey level assessment and then moving more diagnostically is the iReady because it actually looks at specific skills. So the Panorama, they have a series of categories and each category has approximately five questions that go along with those categories. School districts can decide to choose any of the categories to build their assessment. And so currently, the high school and the middle school, the high school piloted the assessment last spring and the middle school is going to start this fall. So I wanted to go through the categories that the middle school and the high school chose so that everyone has an idea of the question. And I apologize, I couldn't memorize every word for word, so I'm going to read from this. So for the middle school, the categories are self-management. And when we talk about self-management, it's talking about how well students manage their emotions, thoughts and behaviors in different situations. So an example question, a sample question would be during the past 30 days, how often did you come prepared to class? Social awareness is the next category. And this determines, or helps us determine, how well students consider the perspectives of others and empathize with them. And so a sample question during that would be during the past 30 days, how carefully did you listen to other people's points of view? Sense of belonging is the next one. How much students feel that they are valued members of the school community? And so that goes right into our strategic plan. And a sample question would be how connected do you feel to the adults at your school? School safety is the next category they chose. That's perceptions of student physical and psychological safety while at school. And that sample question would be how often do you worry about violence at your school? And then the last for the middle school is challenging feelings. And that is how frequently students feel challenging emotions. So during the past week, how often did you feel lonely? Okay? At the high school, they use two categories. They use the self-management, which the middle school did. And again, that's how well students manage their emotions, thoughts and behaviors in different situations. And so again, the sample question was during the past 30 days, how often did you come to class prepared? And then under, they also chose the motion regulation and that's how well students regulate their emotions. So sample question was how often are you able to control your emotions when you need to? So looking at this survey level assessment, what the data team will be considering is, and these absolutely help us identify quickly, those students who may have a feeling of not being included in our district, which we absolutely don't want. We want every student to feel part of the community and to know that they are safe and to know that they can go to any adult in the building to help them. This information, as in, and the research shows that all of these skills really begin in our classrooms, in our school district. We talk about culture. What's our culture of our buildings? What's the student, what's your classroom management? How do you know that your students are engaged and want to be involved? Well, all of this information helps us and combined with the numerous years that we've been working with state and civil schools with the foundations team, it fits right into it. So foundations, we use that to help build student culture, like the middle school activity that your kids went to. Having safe, having safe cafeteria procedures, safe hallway passing. Because oftentimes, kids get bullied when, when it's very busy. And so this helps us outline and support our culture. Are there any questions?
Yes. Yeah, the question that I would add more so, will be the questions being available on the website, sort of parents needing what questions we're asking and who gets to look at the data. That's what's likely to be identified, however, you're going to know who, what student's answering, how they answer.
Yes, well, so, so the, those that are on the data team are going to be your building administrators, your RTI teachers, your counselors. And perhaps, you know, I'll, I'll have access to that. But it's, it's, they're confidential just as our academic records are. People only see what they need to see.
And will, Matt, please, you got to ask, but will the, the data question be released so that the parents can see it, what you're asking?
Actually, the, we, we, we could, we just, because we don't release the AIMS Web questions, we don't release the iReady. It's just, we, it hasn't been our practice.
And why I'm asking, because I'm talking, talking every week is because of all these surveys, just because of the way that the internet works. And there are, there's not the possible questions, but I think a lot of people would not be comfortable if you were asking. And I, I believe that when I ask them this question, they're still out there. And it's tough to say, we're not asking, asking them, or we're not telling you the address. You know? So that's where the concern is coming from.
Yeah, I understand that concern. And, and I, I understand where the concern is coming from. But all of our work with the district, in our district has always been to treat our students respectfully, to treat our parents respectfully and to also, also support them in their needs. And that's why an assessment like this is so beneficial to us because otherwise you can't look, I, I can look at a child and they're smiling and happy, but the reality is they might have had some kind of trauma that they're telling them. And until it comes out, I mean, until we ask them questions, there's no way of us helping them. But regarding those postings, I'm not certain.
I might, I might go, does Panorama already got like 100% of their questions online?
They do, they do.
So they do, I don't see a problem with showing the ones we used that is already out there. Or if you say here are the ones we're selecting.
I'll just have to figure out where to post them and how to link to them.
Yeah, definitely the surveys are valuable. That way, I'm sure. And then the data is getting spirited required?
Yes.
So it might go off.
No, no. Thank you.
And then what can we, having the students take this, what are we going to encourage on the student taking it?
So it's handled differently in both of the buildings, but in the middle school, I believe we are doing this assessment in fall and spring. And the counselors will actually be going, if I'm not mistaken, the counselors are going into the classrooms to explain to the students why they're taking this assessment, to get a more valid and reliable, you know, perspective.
And I guess another point, part is if something was, we receive some, some concern with a student, whatever the reason is, parents would be involved. It's not like, well, we, we're not telling the parents, is we give a call, the parent might say, well, no, we're already taking care of them, they're happy. Okay, just your child. So that's another form.
Thank you, I forgot to mention that. And also, this will also help us identify what types of training our staff might need to support the case as well. So do you have any other questions?
And are there any other districts, like, is this our first time I've been doing this?
Correct.
Doing this?
Using Panorama? Yeah, there's a, I, I don't know the exact number, I think I heard the number 12. This is in the very two closest group using it. But what they've done is as, as a cohort, post-up, they joined into that process, they all agreed to use the same questions. And we were offered the same opportunity, but we felt it was important for us to control the questions asked.
We have like an update in a couple months, and how are we going with it, like, is working?
Absolutely, because the strategic plan, Doug talked about me having the monthly, the monthly to-do list.
It's joy and fun.
Yeah, yeah. But I'll make a note that as soon as the data is gone through, we can, I think we absolutely record. Okay? Any other questions? Okay, move on.
Thank you.
All right, perfect. Again, you can tell MTSS is our, is our big project, project for several years, but we are really seeing some positive things coming out of that. And so it's very exciting. but we are really seeing some positive things coming out of it, and so it's very exciting. Um, the one thing that we have been noticing through, I don't know, the past three or four years, was that each of the schools was collecting data, but they were all storing it and recording it to the groups differently. So that when, for example, a student, a fourth grade student was coming up to the middle school, the middle school folks had to look at three different ways of looking at, I mean, different recording methods. And it was time-consuming. And remember, I said that we want to be efficient and quick in supporting our students. So as, as an administrative team, we worked together with Penn, and we created an M T S S, um, a Microsoft team that our, every member of the R T I committees, of all committees, will have access that allows us to speak to one another quickly through the M T S S team. We also created a OneNote notebook and made a consistent pattern for each of our cohort groups on collecting the data, so that as the student progresses up, we don't have to try and make other pills of what that data is. We now understand the process and, and it's consistent. Um, so we did that during the summer. And then during the first week of school, we invited in all the R T I folks from the primary and a couple from, from the middle school and the administrators who were able to make it. And we did two things. First, Kenny introduced the Microsoft team to everyone, and we did a run-through. But we also recognized that there was a lot of information in there. So currently, you know, we have process and procedure. So currently, what I'm doing is I'm working with the R T I teachers who are present, and I'm creating a, you know, a small handbook for them, so hopefully alleviate stress. Kenny's working on videos and how-tos. It's nothing that we haven't done before, but it's just that everybody wants to do it consistently, and so there's a lot of buy-in on that. And then the other half of the day was looking at our M T S S procedures. We have, we have, um, our policy, which was, which was order-proofed. But now we are, we are looking at our procedures, and eventually we'll get into our participatory. Well, what we did is, we talked about a lot of the history, because some of the R T I teachers weren't a part of this process in twenty eleven and twenty fifteen. So we updated and we talked about why we chose to do what we're doing. So it brought a lot of people up to speed that, um, hadn't, hadn't, didn't have that understanding. Then we talked about how now the S C L procedures will be put into this procedures manual so that it will help finalize the M T S S process. It was probably one of the best, best communication ones, um, people, I, I think people, a lot of people felt, a lot of concerns were there, and we were working our way to help address those concerns. So that was that day. And then additionally, um, our student support staff, our counselors, our social workers are working with our consultants to continue to, because we have basically three new social workers. So we're continuing that work of joining the team and, and working on, um, should there be a threat assessment? There's a student in crisis, what can we do? And firmly that up. On the literacy front, thanks again, John, Board of Education, for helping us get our posters, Lori and Chell, our, our two literacy posters. And what I've been doing the past couple weeks is meeting with them daily to help, uh, devise, um, to, to review, uh, planning, um, uh, presentations and, and the like. And then last week, we spent an entire week going out and meeting with each principal, eight through twelve, to, to find out what their specific needs are. Because in August, uh, they both did a presentation for all of the administrators, but now we want to get, start drilling down and saying, how can we help the high school? How can we help the middle school? And so we now have a, I'd say the next two months filled with what they'll be doing, and so we'll proceed from there. So, um, and they'll be doing classes during our second opening day. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Um, and just the public that's out there during this, if Kenny, there's anything in this, you ever have any questions, please contact, sorry, I'm up there. Please, you know, contact your appropriate administrator or Mary Jo presentations that she did, so she can answer any of those questions for you. Like this, that's it, we're ready for it, thank you.
Very good, that brings us to recognition of guests for Agenda items only, and we have. Yes. Okay. She's ten forty. Uh, discussion for agenda items eleven point zero one through twenty-three point zero seven.
Uh, Jo's here, someone, here it is, raise your hand. Um, Bill Bier, our behavior specialist, retiring, who's, um, captain, who's retiring. Congratulations, ever, for all the service. And Haley, will be a teacher in the air, she's right there in the front row, so, uh, welcome. Trevor, two, I thought it was point four, so that's my. First of all, well, I'll say, I did have a word just today.
Any other discussion? Okay, then, uh, is there a request to withdraw any items from the agenda? Is there a request to add any items to the agenda? Can I have a motion to approve the consensus of agenda items eleven point zero one through twenty-three point zero seven?
Forward. Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Anything? Vote, and have three actions, so. But motion carries with four people. And that brings us to. Turn to our pages. Uh, recognition of guest on any topic. No, no, okay. Uh, do we not need another executive session?
Do not.
Okay, like, can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So.
Sorry guys.
Discussion, all in favor? And our meeting is.